And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Morning, everybody. It's nice to see so many friendly, smiling faces out there. Good to see you all. Thank you for your attendance. Just a reminder, out of courtesy, silence your cell phone. Meeting documents are on the end by Commissioner Hyburger, and if anybody would need a listening device, reach out to one of the county employees. I will look for a motion to approve our agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Look for a motion to approve our commission meeting minutes from June 15th, 2021.
Motion to approve the minutes?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carries. We have bills to be paid in the amount of $757,682.89.
Pay the bills?
Second.
Comments?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair.
That includes, I'm sorry, I lost my number, $190,000, $194,000 to Metro Communications and another $171,000 for contracted construction.
Line chair bills.
So that's $360,000, I think, out of the total there of $750,000.
All right, motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carries. We have reports from Minnehaha County Coroner, Coroner, I'm sorry. Moving on to personnel actions, we'd look for a motion to approve routine personnel actions.
That's my motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We have no abatements recommended for approval, no notices and requests, no planning and zoning notices, or petitions for compromise of lien, so we are now at the opportunity for public comment. Anybody here would like to address the commission by, about any thing that's not on our agenda? All righty, moving on to our regular business. We will look for a motion regarding the revised CMAR, Construction Manager at Risk Contract, and revised amendment for CMAR contract with Henry Carlson. We have our owner's rep, Dick Strasberg, on the line. Mr. Strasberg, looking forward to your comments. If you have any, if not, we can go to commission action.
Sir, good morning. So let's start this little background on this. As you recall, we have the contract with the Highway Department, with Henry Carlson in the Highway Department. And there was a little confusion, I think, in terms of the drafting of these agreements, where we, some of the language from the Highway Department remained in these contracts, and it wasn't cleaned up. So this is basically a cleanup action here to get these documents in proper order for the extension and what will be the admin building amendment as well.
Questions for Dick? I have one, Dick. Does this in any way impact our timeline?
No, it doesn't.
Doesn't? Good to hear. Okay. Commissioner Hyburger.
Mr. Chairman, I'm assuming that this is four different motions, and so we'll need to read each motion, and, and, okay.
Just nod, from the nod from our state's attorney, that is affirmative, four motions.
If you're ready, I'll make the first motion, is to rescind the Construction Manager at Risk Agreement for the Extension Administration Buildings and Remodel as approved on May 25th, 2021.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to number two. Go ahead, you're on the roll.
Okay. Authorize the chairman to decide the revised Construction Manager at Risk Agreement for the Extension Administration Building and Remodel. That's my motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Number three is to rescind the Amendment Number One Guaranteed Maximum Price Amendment to the Construction Manager at Risk Agreement for the Extension Administration Building and Remodeling. That's my motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carries, and the fourth one.
Number four is authorize the chairman to sign the revised Amendment Number One Guaranteed Maximum Price Amendment to the Construction Manager at Risk Agreement for the Extension Administration Building and Remodel. That's my motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Dick. We rescinded two and rewrote them, so I think we're in good shape. Anything else, sir?
Yeah. Done.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your work.
All right, thank you.
You bet. All righty. Motion to approve updates to the Minnehaha County's Drug and Alcohol Procedures Manual Employee Handbook effective July 1st, 2021. Here to brief us, Carrie Dever.
Good morning, Carrie Dever from Human Resources. We recently reviewed our drug and alcohol procedures in light of the legalization of marijuana. I've attached for you a copy of the red line changes, which looks significant, but really amount to a few select areas. Right now, the county conducts drug testing post offer on any applicant for our safety sensitive positions only, so that's Highway, JDC, and our Sheriff's Office candidates. We do random drug and alcohol testing for just safety sensitive, and then we do post accident and reasonable suspicion testing. All of our testing processes currently include marijuana. With the revisions, it will continue to include marijuana, and being under the influence of marijuana while working will continue to be a violation as well. However, there will be a change that we're going to treat medical marijuana as a prescription drug, and a positive test will only be a violation of the policy if the employee has, as long as, will not be a violation, as long as the employee has a prescription and hasn't been under the influence while working. There are some exceptions, of course. A large portion of our community is law enforcement, and we also have several positions at the highway that are DOT. Those are governed by federal regulations, their safety policies. We also have some specific state laws covering that. So for our safety sensitive positions, there will be an exception to those provisions on marijuana, and that will still be a violation of the policy. We're taking a conservative approach. We're getting this in front of you so that we have it in place by July 1st. We anticipate that as more information becomes available, we might have further revisions to the policies, and we'll bring them forward then if we do.
Questions for Carrie. Commissioner Bender.
I just would like to thank Carrie and her staff for working on this. I know the state's attorney has also spent a fair bit of time thinking about marijuana lately. It's very, it's just confusing. I mean, you've got, you know, federal regulations where marijuana remains illegal, and then with the new state laws, and so, you know, this is an issue that not only Minnehaha County is dealing with, but every employer in South Dakota is trying to get their arms around this. And I would guess there, you know, there'll be further, maybe further revisions down the road, but I really think they've done a great job with addressing what we know now, and, you know, trying to deal with all the different areas of county employees and how they all are differently affected by all of this. So I just really want to say thank you, and I'm fully in support of it.
Ms. Hyburger.
Sitting on this upcoming task force where we'll be looking at what kind of ordinances might possibly happen in Minnehaha County. I've been working on reading through the bill that we passed, which is very long, if you haven't read it. And as far as I can see so far, all the changes that have been made, which I was confident are very, right in compliance with what this new laws that we voted on. And so, for people that are concerned about that, we have not broken any new laws. So, and we, like Commissioner Bender said, the state's attorney's also been working on this. So, from everything I can read, it is right in compliance. Thank you, Carrie. It was a lot of work. Just reading it is a lot of work.
It was, and you're absolutely right. There were a lot of people involved. Eric, of course. We also worked with Chief Deputy Gromer and the Sheriff's Office on reviewing items and policies and some of those law enforcement related items. So thankful to them, and we will continue to look at it and consider things if our interpretation changes.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner.
So we are in the middle of a big change, and, you know, obviously, this is, you know, maybe step one. You know, going forward in the future, we may need to look at criminal records for people who were convicted of something which is no longer a crime. And honestly, since this vote, I haven't thought this much about marijuana for 50 years. It's, times are changing, and we're in the middle of change, and so we are making the adjustments as we can. I know that there is a test to show intoxication of some kind, and from my point of view, knowing that you were in Amsterdam last month, doesn't matter, but knowing if you were intoxicated while driving that school bus into the ditch, that's important. And we're moving towards finding solutions.
Along those lines, we do plan on scheduling, and we do this regularly, where we do reasonable suspicion training for department heads and supervisors. We are looking at doing that again in light of the changes.
I'm also in favor of this change. It's pretty straightforward, and common sense is applied. I was not aware, however, that there is a test to confirm if you're currently under the influences. Do you know anything about that?
What I've heard as far as testing is really comes down to trying to get a sense of whether or not you're, how under the influence you are. And unfortunately, from what I'm understanding, there isn't like the clear cut test like you would have with alcohol, where you can actually measure. It's going to be more of a measurement of impairment or how your reflexes are responding. So that'll be interesting to see as it develops.
Or cognitive thing.
Yes.
Okay, okay. All right. Do we have a motion?
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie. All right, we have Mr. Gierman, Minnehaha County Emergency Management. Welcome.
Good morning. Jason Gierman, Minnehaha County Emergency Management. The first thing on my agenda, your agenda today, is the request for a fire ban, a resolution for that. I was contacted last week, the 17th, about the rural fire chiefs. After their meeting, they wanted me to get this on the agenda, to look into a fire ban due to the, obviously, dry conditions we've had and the lack of rain. I did a little checking into this, and I've had some conversations with several people. The National Weather Service has not issued what they call the red flag warning due to the percentage of green right now. However, that could change rapidly if we don't get enough rain. And just a quick note on the percentage of green, it's obviously, the crops are green, the ditches are green. I have noticed that, you know, after the interstates were mowed, they're starting to turn brown, and, you know, the rural fire guys do respond a lot to the cigarette butts out on the interstates. So I know I have some rural fire guys here today. If you have any questions for them or me, go ahead.
Commissioners. I guess my conversation with Jason yesterday was, we will not meet again until July 6th.
Correct.
Is our next meeting. We have the 4th of July coming up. Does this impact the
Well.
ability to launch any fireworks?
There's a lot of other counties that are doing the burn ban. I did look into Lincoln Counties, and it doesn't really address fireworks. Now, ours doesn't specifically say fireworks, but what I'll do is just kind of read this quickly here. The intentional casting off of any burning substance, whether natural or manmade. So although it doesn't say fireworks, that could be a sparkler, that could be a firecracker. So that's kind of the interesting thing we're dealing with, specific to Minnehaha County.
Commissioner Bender.
Well, I recognize we don't meet next week. I know that we could have a, you know, we could schedule a meeting if we felt like it was, you know, absolutely necessary to address a burn ban. But, you know, without a red flag warning, with 4th of July coming, and just, just kind of driving around and seeing that things are relatively green, there are a couple of days where rain is in the forecast coming up in the next couple of weeks, or next couple of days. I mean, I'm personally not in favor of a burn ban right now. I'd just as soon not cancel 4th of July today. And if, I'd like to watch it, and if, you know, if we feel like we're in an emergency situation, address it next Tuesday if needed. But I would, at the same time, like to be in a soapbox a little bit, and really encourage folks who will be celebrating 4th of July to do so in a safe and responsible manner. I think we all have some responsibility for monitoring how the celebration goes, and we shouldn't put our neighbors in a situation where they have to stand in front of their house with a fire hose either.
I'll piggyback on that, because my conversation with Jason yesterday is, instead of making this an emergency declaration, that maybe we make it effective July 6th. And that way, we can go through the 4th of July. Most people are pretty tired of fireworks being launched by the 5th of July. But we're going to meet on July 6th, and if we decide on July 6th that we don't need it, then we can repeal it. Commissioner Hyburger.
That's a novel idea, too, but I would suggest that we just leave it up to Jason. If it needs to go on the sixth agenda, he's going to know by Friday, and he can put it on the agenda, and we can address it at that point. If we have four more rainstorms between now and the 4th, there's no reason to even put it there. I would, I would just leave it in Jason's ballpark, that if he thinks it needs to come back to us, that he can put it on our agenda, and we'll vote for, vote it on the 6th.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair.
It seems like whenever we put in a burn ban, it immediately rains. So, you know, it might work better than prayer. But I think that the enforcement of it over the 4th of July, you know, it would just cause a little more disrespect for law. I mean, we need people to respect the rules, and if you put in a rule that 86% of the people are not going to follow, it's not making us a better society. I, I think we have to, I agree that we should defer action for a bit here. But I think people out there that are maybe watching this or listening to this, please use caution, use your best judgment. And if you don't have good judgment, ask someone that does. It's, it's kind of dismal that when we rely on people to use good judgment, it turns out that we're not born with it. So I think we should, we should wait. Law enforcement should take pictures of people who are clearly being dangerous with their, with their stuff. And, you know, that would be true if I saw someone throw a cigarette butt out. But I see that the fire chiefs want to speak, too.
So one way of determining if you have good common sense is if you have to say, "Hold my beer and watch this," would probably be a good indication.
Pour the beer on the fire.
One of the, one of the things that I can do, too, is, is reach out to the media. I really expected one of them to be here on a camera today with all the questions that I've had from the different organizations. But, so I'll work on that and some press releases with the sheriff, and, you know, kind of get that message out. But the, one of the fire chiefs is here, and he'd like to address the commission, reference this, so.
Please.
Robert Dykstra, I'm the current president of the Minnehaha County Fire Chiefs Association. We had our meeting, and we discussed this. These very things were discussed, and we don't want to take away anybody's fun, but we're giving up our time and our fun because of stuff like this. It is green, but I think any fire department member here can testify. In the last two weeks, we've responded to grass fires. What's burning is green. It is burning. And where there has been a fire, it is not growing back at all. If you look at where there's been a fire in the last two to three weeks, or longer, it's still brown. That grass hasn't greened up. And this time of year, usually that's one of the better things you can do for, for grass and pastures, is have that fire, and it greens right up, full of nutrients. It's dead. There's no subsoil moisture. We already changed our protocol where we're responding with two fire departments on a grass fire, because we know it, the potential's there. That green grass is, can be quite misleading. I don't know if anybody else has responded to any fires lately, but the ones I've responded to, two of them are caused by fireworks, directly related to fireworks. One was last week already. So without any moisture between now and the 4th, that's two weeks away, I think we're, we're really going to be behind. I spent 4th of July's chasing fires for six hours. I had to give up my family time, and I realize everybody has family time, but I think we need to consider everybody in this. So we just, we don't take this lightly when we propose it to the county commission. We understand it's a big undertaking, but we're away from our families and our jobs, and that's how we put food on our table, too. So, thank you.
Mr. Chair. Chief Dykstra?
Yes.
I really appreciate your comments, and they're very forceful. What about the enforcement part of it, though? You know, we'll, we'll be having hundreds of people, thousands of people, tens of thousands of people out shooting off fireworks, and, and, you know, what do we do?
How do we clean up the garbage? With all due respect, you drive down the county roads, there's garbage on every county road. And I know we're short strapped to enforce it, but we try to get the word out, we advertise it, we put it in the media that there's a burn ban, and we can't do it. It works. I mean, it helps. From the people I talk to, they said, "Yeah, we noticed there's no burn ban," or they'll call. Some of us. I've been, I get phone calls quite a bit. "Is there a burn ban on? Can I do this?"
What about the idea of, I'm sorry, taking pictures of people who are doing this and going back at them when there, when there is a fire, for them to compensate for the damage?
We, if it's something like this, we can turn it into their insurance company, and if the insurance company pays, fine. If not, we really don't have a lot of recourse there. We can take the pictures and send it to the law enforcement if that's what they want. Definitely work with them.
Questions, comments, motions?
I appreciate what you're saying. I think that even if we put the burn ban in, we're going to have people shooting fireworks off nonstop, and I think we're going to put additional stress on our law enforcement that are already working really hard to try to keep people safe from craziness and fireworks. I still would be in favor of leaving this with Jason, and if he sees in the next five days that, because we are going to get hot again, that he can call you, Commissioner Kersky, and there can be a special meeting, and we can put it in effect. At this point, I would like to wait and see if we get some rain, and I think that we just need to do a lot of media out there. Again, people be responsible, because you're responsible if you start a fire, so.
And I appreciate your comments as well, and I, you know, I don't think we take this lightly either. And I would encourage folks that, you know, everybody who lives out in Rome in Minnehaha County is dependent on volunteer fires, firemen and women, volunteers. And so I would really hope that if you don't know one, you get to know one, or you volunteer yourself. And that would likely moderate your activities, because, you know, I don't want to be responsible for you or any of the other volunteer firemen losing time, or people's property being at risk. But without a red flag warning or any other, you know, thing that we can hang our hat on right now, I would prefer to wait and reevaluate this in a week and see before we, before we cancel 4th of July, so.
What is the date that you can legally launch fireworks beginning on? Because, and the reason I ask that question?
You can buy it this week, I know.
This impacts more than just fireworks. June 27th?
Yep.
So you can launch fireworks from the 27th through?
I think it's the, the first Sunday.
Through the Saturday after?
The first Sunday after the 4th, or something.
Okay, so for, you can launch for a whole week then, and a week before. So we'll have a period of two weeks where you can launch fireworks. But, I mean, this burn ban impacts more than fireworks. It impacts people that live in the rural community that have fire pits and burn garbage and do other burning in their property for what they need to take care of.
I don't know if this is possible or not. Would it be possible, like, for a motion to allow myself, and maybe with the recommendation of rural fire and the commission chair, to just enact a burn ban, if it, if in the next five days, all of a sudden, the rural fires just continually go into calls, or they have a high rate of calls with, with these fireworks?
I would probably prefer that if we were to have a burn ban, that it not be effective immediately, that it maybe begin on June 27th, and give me the authority to rescind it if it rains, or we have moisture, instead of giving me the authority to impose it, but give me the, because that's what we've done in the past. The chair has been given the authority to rescind the burn ban.
Question for Jason. What is it, the red flag warning from the Weather Bureau?
If the conditions were in the fall right now, where the crops were changing, and the grass was turning brown, definitely there would be a red flag warning right now.
So, but they could put one in tomorrow, right?
And talking with them, there was no immediate rush, but they did say, you know what, if it continues down the next couple of weeks, we're going to seriously think about it.
So they're not on the edge of declaring a red flag warning for us?
Not, I mean, not in the next couple of days, maybe in the next couple of weeks. You know, they go by percentage of green. Whatever that percentage is, I don't know, so.
So either we'll look for a motion to approve this, or I will let it die for lack of emotion.
Well, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I certainly am persuaded by the comments of the rural fire chiefs who have to go out and waste their time doing this. And I think the idea of having it, you know, perhaps on the, have our emergency management person with the fire chiefs, and perhaps you, sir, declare a burn ban if, if that's necessary. I'm not ready to not take action, I guess. I'd like to take some action. Any thoughts from, we just want to let it die? All right, well, I'll make a formal motion to approve a burn ban so that we can see where the chips are.
It appears that will die for a lack of a second, and we will move on to our next agenda item.
May all those grass fires die also?
Commissioner Kersky. Commissioner Kersky.
Commissioner Hyburger.
I would just say, since it died for a lack of a second, obviously, you will be in conversation with Jason about situations and how they're unfolding. And so it's not a dead subject, just because we didn't vote on the burn ban. It could come back up very quickly, so.
Correct. And if you're going to be lighting fireworks out, have permission to do it, township roads, they just look like trash piles sometimes. Pick up your stuff if you're going to be out there. Please, don't be a slob. All righty.
Next on the agenda, fireworks. A request's been made by Mike Denning for fireworks permit for June 22nd at Housit Speedway. I talked to Carol on this. Obviously, she couldn't be here today, so I'm kind of taking care of this for her. Just to let you know, this, this falls in with that mile radius Brandon and Minnehaha County. And if you weren't aware of this, that the city of Brandon approved this last night. Now, I don't think we have, we've ever done like a formal permit in Minnehaha County, but they're trying to follow the rules here, and that's what they're, that's what they're requesting, so.
All righty. Questions for Jason?
We don't have any, any ordinances or procedures or anything for us to allow a permit, do we? It would just be if we had a burn ban.
Correct.
So there really isn't anything to do on this one either, is there?
Yes, I don't think.
Let's ask the state's attorney instead of asking Jason. Maybe that helps.
Your legal advice is appropriate.
Yeah.
Thanks, Jason.
Mr. Chairman. Eric Boggs, State's Attorney's Office. You're correct, Mr. Hyburger. We do not actually have an ordinance addressing this, but state law does give control over displays of fireworks to the county commission. So there's two different kinds of displays. What I understand, this one would be the consumer level fireworks, so they have made an application. You don't have guidelines set up, as I've already mentioned, with an ordinance setting out criteria, but the requirement is still there, that they need to seek permission to have a public display. So that's different than just your kids going out in the backyard having their own little event. Don't want to call it a display again, but, so, that's, that's why, to their credit, they've, they've brought this, this application forward. So all the information that was presented before is correct. We don't have a process, but state law still says that you have the control, so.
They're, they're basically asking for permission and saying we have insurance, and we want to do what the state law says.
And the form that they have presented, actually, a nice form, it is not a South Dakota form. I don't know if it's come from the fireworks associations themselves or some other state. There's no South Dakota reference that was on the form whatsoever. And I checked with the state level resources and cannot find that this form was generated anywhere in the state. But again, I have no problem with the form itself. So it does have the insurance language on it, which is nice, so.
Commissioner.
I would be in favor of this. I think it is to their credit that they've come and asked for permission in visiting with emergency management, and I don't think that profession- And I don't think that professional fireworks shows like this provide the same fire danger just because they are by groups that are, you know, generally pretty well controlled and they clearly recognize the financial impact by getting the insurance and providing us proof of that. So I would make a motion to allow this fireworks to show.
Second that. And I think you mentioned they, they have, they have insurance. They have taken out a liability insurance on this.
And named the county on it, so.
Anybody from Brandon with a comment on this?
I received a call from a Brandon city counselor last week questioning me on it, but pretty much exactly the conversation, what Mr. Boggs said, so. So, okay. Motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right, Mr. Dykstra, welcome back. We have a briefing by the county fire chiefs.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. I also brought, as you can see, some other firefighters with us. I will have Mike Karstad also address because he's the one behind all of this with the facts and the figures. As it states there, our radios have to be P-25 compliant. That's per state and federal guidelines. We have no control over that. Basically, the radios and communication devices we have right now will not work come 2023. They have to be in by 2023. And as I stated there in the memo, it could be as early as July here in Minnehaha County. They're going to be working on Pennington and Minnehaha County first. So we're a little bit earlier in that year. As we all know, last year was a pretty significant year when it comes to fundraising with COVID. I don't know of too many departments that didn't see a decrease in their fundraising. We can only do so much fundraising. It's tight for people as well. And it's kind of hard to go to some of our, our patrons and ask for money when they've had a hard time as well. So our budgets have been hit, our fundraising has been hit. So what we want to do is at least come in and address the commission. There is some of this grant money. I believe it's the ARP, American Recovery Plan Grant. And with that, I would like to ask Mike to come up and present some facts and figures because, like I said, he's the, he's the math guy on this.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Good morning, commissioners. Mike Karstad, Fire Chief in Crooks. First, I'd like to say thanks for having us this morning. It's really nice to see face to face again instead of watching Zoom meetings and Teams meetings and everything else. As Robert said, we've got representatives here today from Baltic, Brandon, Crooks, Lyons, Humboldt and Colton. The last 18 months of COVID have been, to say the least, a challenge in the volunteer fire service. We've seen an increase in call volume. Year over, usually we've been seeing 2%, 3%, 4% call volume increase. Last year, we saw nine. And it's, you know, when we, when we look through February through May, there were a lot of people very, very afraid of COVID and every sniffle they had was a call to 911 because they're, they're dying of COVID. So we saw a huge increase for that. We also saw a huge increase in our requirements to respond to those calls. Different levels of PPE required, gowns, masks, face shields. All of that stuff became required, not just every once in a while. So that caused a, a, a pretty good flex on our end for spending in a very immediate way. There were shortages across the country with PPE. We worked with, with Sanford and Aveira here in, in town to help ease some of those problems, but it was an ongoing thing for over the last year. And as Robert also mentioned, our fundraisers, you know, all of the volunteer agencies in this county rely on several fundraisers, pancake feeds, soup dinners, dances, et cetera, that all were basically ground to a halt for the last year and a half and have only recently just begun. So the, the main reason that we're here today is to talk about our radio system. June 24th, 2003, might not ring a bell, but it will, it will certainly ring a bell when I say tornado Tuesday. We set a record in South Dakota, 67 tornadoes touched down in the state. That was most in one day in one state in history. And it highlighted what was already begun by Governor Janklow at the time was inter, inter-agency communication, the firefighters being able to talk to neighboring fire departments, being able to talk to the cops, to the, the snowplow operators, whoever. So that's the, the beginning of our state radio system. When that was all put together, it was started by Governor Janklow, it was finished by Governor Rounds, and they put in all the infrastructure and provided us all the radios to switch to this wonderful digital radio system. That was a huge lift at the time. I believe it was somewhere in the vicinity of $300 million that the state of South Dakota spent on the initial buildup of the system. That got 15,000 radios out in the hands of fire departments, sheriff's office, police agencies, all, everything. Since that time, it's been our individual responsibilities to maintain that system. At the time, when, when that was started in 2005, Minnetonka County was one of the, the first agencies in the state to switch. It only makes sense, we're the largest. So our departments have been on the state radio system now for 16 years. All of that original equipment that we were given by the state has, has all been replaced. A lot of the radios at the time were EF Johnson and the, the, our initial rollout of all that digital system actually drove EF Johnson out of business. They sold too many and had too many problems and they were a very difficult vendor to work with for a long time. So most of that business has switched over to Motorola. And since that time, Motorola is actually the only vendor that provides equipment that we can use on the state's radio system. So there's a federal mandate that by January of 2023, all radio systems have to be P-25 compliant. The state is handling the infrastructure of the system, upgrading their stuff, upgrading their towers, everything else. They have left us out in the cold on our actual equipment. And when we received word about two years ago that this was going to happen, what we found out was essentially all of our equipment, all the radios in our trucks, all the radios that our personnel carry would be paperweights. They're not upgradable. We had to start over. So for the last two years, we've been working on this through grants, through budgeting on our own, everything. When we started this, I started working on FEMA grants to help replace the system. We took inventory of everything in the county between our truck radios, our portable radios and our paging systems. It's about $1.7 million to replace just the equipment that we already had, not to even add. We, we, we've never had all the equipment that we would like to have. But just to replace the stuff that was in our trucks, in our personnel's hands, 1.7 million. Over the last two and a half years, through grant funding, through shifting our own budgetary dollars and everything else, we've gotten to almost $1.3 million of equipment replaced, okay? We've made significant progress and something that really, really helped us last fall. All the CARES Act funding that came through, those of us in the county that are part of a municipality were able to get some funding for radios. Wasn't what we asked for, but it was at least something. That helped. That also left a few of our agencies out in the cold because Lyons, Renner and Split Rock are township fire departments. They're not associated with a city municipality, so they had no place to go. You know, where Crooks, I went to the city of Crooks and was able to get some of that funding. Those three agencies didn't have any of that ability. So where we're at today, Scott at Metro has been very, very helpful, Matt Thule as well, with getting our needs defined. We're, we're kind of in that last stage. We're about $400,000 away from, from being able to say we're P-25 compliant. There's still a lot of programming that would have to be done, but in, in real radio terms, what that means to us is all the radios that the guys carry, we've been able to replace almost all of those. We've got a few to go, but we've been able to replace most of those. The ones that we haven't been able to get to yet are the ones that go in our trucks. And actually, those are the most reliable ones. They're higher powered. And if we ever have trouble getting out to Metro or out to another agency with our handheld radios, you go to the truck, you use a, a higher powered radio. Those are the ones that we still need to replace. And again, we're, we're about $400,000 short. So what we wanted to do today was just get in front of you guys. There's, there's going to be some more of that funding available. We'd just like to be part of the conversation. When it gets to that, we just need help with this final lift. We have stretched our individual department budgets as far as they can go. We're, we're starting to recover from some of that fundraising stuff. We're doing everything that we can on our behalf to try and get this done. We've got a couple other grant requests out there, but we've, we've, we're very close to tapping out what we can, what we can obtain on our own. So we're just looking for some assistance to help us get across that finish line and, and keep our level of service where it is and where it has been and keep us going for the future. So I'd entertain any questions you guys have.
Commissioner Bender?
Well, I'd just say you did a great job. Thank you very much. It's really helpful to, to hear. I mean, we know you guys are working hard and, and that this is an important thing for all the citizens of Minnehaha County. I certainly am not an expert on ARPA funds, but I know we've been working on it on a county basis. And to the extent this qualifies for ARPA funds, I would certainly be very supportive of Minnehaha County supporting that application to see what funds we could get for you guys. Certainly, I think that there's a strong case that it's COVID related and would be very helpful in any. Hopefully, we don't, none of us in this room get to live through another pandemic, but if we do, it would certainly be very helpful, so.
I was basically going to say what Commissioner Bender said is that you guys have done a great job. When you said 1.7 million, I'm like, oh, no, but I can't believe you've raised 1.3, which is amazing. And yeah, I agree. I mean, I've already been thinking about the fire departments as far as, we don't know all the rules yet, you know, staff and, and auditor's offices working really hard on that to say, what can we? And I, I think you guys are on the list somewhere, as, you know, this is somebody that we should be looking to help. And so if there's any way we can, I would be supportive of that. It's super important to everyone in this community for you guys to have radios.
I, I would concur and say that they tell us we've got all these millions, but no one can tell us how we can spend, spend it. And it's, it's like up there in the cloud, wherever the heck that is. And this has been an ongoing issue for all these many years. We'll have to work one way or the other, whether we use those monies or other monies to support your operations. Remind me how much those radios cost a piece?
Uh, the, 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 the gist of it is about $4,000 a piece, each radio.
I still own Motorola stock. I concur with the commissioners.
Completely agree with you. I'll give you this, though. With the upgrade to P-25 compliant, that opened, Motorola was really the only ones that did the, the niche of non. Once we get to P-25, it opens up the market for several other radios that we can purchase.
How does the $400,000 request, Lyons, Renner's, Split Rock, I mean?
They're included in that.
Because they're not municipal, I mean, are they included in that? Is that to help them out too?
Yes, the, 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 the 400,000 would cover all county agencies.
Okay. Okay. I, I don't think you're going to have any pushback from the commissioners and we'll look forward to seeing what we can come up with through those, those funds, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
All righty, moving on.
Mr. Chairman, before they all leave the room, I just want to say it's been a, a long time since we had this many smiling faces in the room.
Yeah, that's true. Yeah.
Thank you, chiefs. We appreciate all, all of your support and help, so thank you for being here. All righty, moving on to approve a preliminary, preliminary plan for number 2102 for Peterson's first edition. Scott, welcome.
Thank you, Scott Anderson, Planning Director. And today we have a relatively routine item. This is a preliminary plan to create a, a new subdivision, approximately 40 lots. This is about a mile and a half north of Renner. It has gone before the planning commission and they recommended approval at their May meeting. The applicants here and to represent the, the request as well. But it is a requirement of our subdivision ordinance that preliminary plans go through both the planning commission and then subsequently they come to the county board for approval. And once that's approved, it would allow the applicant to move forward to obtain, to provide surety bonding for the road improvements. And then that also allows them to start plating off lots in any amount they, they desire. They may want to do, you know, three or four at a time or, or a, a first edition that may have 10 or 12 lots. But then they can subsequently start moving along and selling off lots. Those plats we approve administratively. It's just the original preliminary plan that gets your review. There was quite a bit of information that was provided with a preliminary plan. They do engineered road plans, they do a grading plan, an erosion plan, and that is all submitted and, and it is in a big packet of information. And so I'd be glad to answer any questions. I have a few pictures. This is the proposed plan. You may be familiar with this, is where the old Peterson Mobile Home Park was. And now this is how they are going to redevelop it. I would call this a redevelopment. It is zoned RR, rural residential, so the minimum lot sizes will be one acre and larger. They will be serviced by Septic Systems, which the mobile homes were also serviced by Septic Systems. And they will be provided many, water by Minnehaha Community Water. So the, the hashed areas are some, shows some drainage, some drainage ways. But this shows the topography. And then generally, if you're familiar with, with the area, right now they're gravel roads and they will need to be redeveloped into paved roads. And this is just generally the subdivision. You can see they've already blocked off some roads and, and they have removed, they've started to remove mobile homes from the site. This was a former mobile home site, but I'd be glad to answer any questions and I know the applicants here as well.
Commissioner Iberger?
How many mobile homes were there originally?
I believe I heard 43. Is that correct?
Forty-two.
Forty-two. And they're going to 40 residential sites, residential lots.
I, I, I mean, this is a huge revenue increase for property taxes for us because I would assume most homes are more expensive than a mobile home is. And so it's, it's a good thing for the county to add that much more revenue to our property tax base. Am I wrong on that, Scott? You're looking kind of funny.
No, I think it's a great idea. And I just was going to also comment that this is directly north of the Cedar Ridge Plan Development. You actually can see their lots. So it's becoming quite a, a, I won't, I, I won't say community because, but there, it, it's a significant number of homes that are out there now with those two developments. And then we've had a number of, of eligibilities that had been transferred from on the west side of 115. So there, there's quite a group of houses there and it's close to Renner. I mean, this is also going to be a boom to Renner as well.
Commissioner?
Will those roads be developed as the houses are put in or is the whole neighborhood going to be done first? I mean, is it going in sections?
Well, I, that might be a question that you, you should ask the applicant because I, I think that's going to fall into how their business plan is going to unroll. They're working with an engineering company and they may develop it in phases. That's similar to like what Cedar Ridge did. They bond for, they post surety to, to do the bonding or they bond for a certain amount of the road to be constructed. Then they sell off the lots and then they might go on to another phase. That is one way they could do all the roads at once. And, you know, that, that is up to, up to them as, as it fits into their business plan, but you could ask them that.
One more question for Scott. With you guys' list of things to do from planning and zoning, then the houses can't be all put up and no road is done. Is there a deadline on the road? Or is there a deadline on the sections or?
There's, there's a deadline on the, on the surety bond.
Okay.
They have two years to complete the improvements.
Okay.
So that gives them, but we would, we would allow them to start. Once they post the surety and they plat, and then they plat the property, they could start building on that. And then they would have two years to actually complete the improvements, like the road, which in this case, the improvements are all road construction, getting that, that. And the roads are generally in there. They may have to do a little bit more shaping of some of the ditches and maybe widening out a little bit of the road and then they'll pave it.
All righty, I, I have a couple of questions. Alrighty, I, I have a couple of questions. Um, 40 homes and I, I don't know if it's changed with rezone, but any requirement for access roads off 115? I mean, do we, because of fire protection so that there's more than one way in and out if you need to? Or is that limited by state statute?
Well, a little bit of both. It, the access, this is a state highway, so DOT, um, controls access points onto, onto the state highway. They already have two access points. So it's like a looped road. So, and those were the, they are using the, the existing approaches that provided access into the, into the mobile home park and the road structure that was there.
Okay, okay. And I'm guessing this is gonna be kind of a rural residential. There's probably not gonna be curb and gutter or street lights or sidewalks or
No.
anything like that.
It'll be a, a 24-foot driving surface, um, probably, well, gravel shoulder. And it's spelled out in our, in the subdivision regu, regulations, I think it has to be two feet or two and a half feet on each side of the, of the show, of the, of the driving surface. And then you have a, like a three-to-one side slope in the ditches and it, they'll have to meet all that requ, that, the requ, those requirements. There is no requirements for curb and gutter or there are no subdivision requirements for sidewalks or lighting. That's all whether they want that or not.
Okay. And the road is a private road? It's not maintained by the township, so they would have a, would there be a road?
Well, we indicate that, um, they need to, so when property is plotted in the county, they have to indicate that the roads are going to be, who's going to maintain the roads? If it's going to be the township or if it's gonna be like a road association or a homeowners association? They have basically three options and they would work, this is in Mapleton Township. They would work with the township's supervisors to, to, typically they come to an agreement. If they build it to a certain standard, then the, the township may or may not accept it on their, on their road, um, maintenance schedule. And if they don't, then they would need to, um, develop their own mechanism for road improvement. And that could either be like a homeowners association or a road district.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I would just say that for the time I've been on the county commission, this is one of the largest rural residential, uh, spots in, in our county. And I think that, uh, under, with the previous housing, uh, they had more people living there than in Sherman. And, uh, other than that, I think, uh, you know, maybe Wall Lake would have a similar number of people. But Sherman population 70, um, yeah, and yet they're not a municipality.
Good point, alrighty. So looking for a motion to approve the preliminary plan.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second.
Mr. Chair, I guess, uh, is it a public hearing on this?
Uh-uh.
No, okay.
Thank you, Commissioner. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, same sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Moving on to change orders one and two for the energy plant chiller replacement. Mr. Krenz.
Good morning, Commissioners, Mark Krenz, Facilities Department. Here today looking for a motion to approve change orders one and two for the energy plant chiller replacement project. Uh, change order one is a total of $11,618. Um, that's two additions and one deduct. Um, uh, addition number one is cooling tower stainless steel basin option. That's a $26,066 add. Um, number two is cooling tower motor option, $3,598 add. And number three was a pump electrical credit, which was a deduct of $18,046. Change order number two was a total of $6,074. That was two additions. Number one is electrical service hydrovac for $4,638. And number two was cooling tower makeup water, uh, wiring for $1,436. Some of these two change orders is $17,692 add to the project. Are there any questions?
Commissioner Bender?
Mark, can you just give us a little bit of background in the decision-making that led to these change orders?
Sure, so, um, it's probably easier if I just go through them by each one, if that's okay? So the cooling tower stainless steel basin option, um, originally they were specified to have galvanized steel. Um, after doing a little bit more research and talking to some of the vendors, it was a huge improvement because over time the galvanized leaks. The stainless steel basins, they're welded seams, so they'll basically last forever. So that's why I chose to move forward with that. Um, the cooling tower motor option, um, I toured Sanford's complex. Originally, we specified the fan motor to be inside the airstreams, to be inside the cooling tower. Um, I decided to go with this option to move the motor outside, so it's not actually in the airstream where all the moisture is. Uh, some of, the thing that changed my mind about Sanford was they had, um, a couple of these cooling towers with the motor on the outside and they looked like brand new from day one. The ones they had inside, the paint was gone, they're starting to rust. You get more issues with bearings and stuff like that, so. Um, the pump electrical credit, uh, after the electricians got looking into the project, um, with the main switch for the chiller, it was originally specified to pipe in all new, all new wire conduit and upgrade this, and replace the switch. Once they looked into it, they realized that we could just upgrade basically the guts of that switch. So all that labor, wiring, conduit was a huge savings there on that portion of it. Uh, change order two, the electrical service, um, hydrovac, um, due to the size of the chillers, we had to put in a new electrical service just for those. Um, so it was originally specified to, um, bore underground, under the driveway over at the park, um, the parking lot there by the energy plant. Uh, when the locate was called in, we realized there was a three-inch main gas line that, um, Mid-American had. And their documents were so old, we didn't know exactly where that was, so we didn't wanna risk obviously hitting that. So, um, we had to hydrovac to, you know, avoid that. Uh, and then the cooling tower makeup water wiring was something I wanted to add, you know, all of, uh, the, these controls and everything on the chillers or it's all automated. The only thing we didn't add was the cooling towers. I wanted to put an add on that just so I could monitor the water levels, which obviously affect how the chillers operate. So there was some additional wiring piping that had to be done for that, so.
What was the total budget originally on this project, Mark?
Just under 1.9.
1.9, so it's a small change, okay. Commissioner Bender?
Well, I just wanna thank Mark for the work. I mean, I've learned, I didn't even know what a chiller was a few years ago and so, and I understood most of what you just said about, um, the change orders. So I, I think that's a big win for me. Um, but this is a, this is a big win for the county. I mean, this is something that we started looking at when we were looking at the addition to the jail and it's, uh, something that's really needed for the whole campus. I know the highway department lost some air conditioning last week and when your air conditioning doesn't work, all your employees certainly notice it. And so, um, I think this is, really sets the county up, the whole campus up for the future. And I'm, I'm supportive of all this and would make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. You got the money in the budget? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, same sign, motion carries. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Alright, so we are looking at school districts. We've gone from fire departments to planning to energy plants to school districts, diverse, diverse agenda.
Yes, good morning, Commissioners, Ben Kite, Auditor's Office. So the request before you is to allow a minor boundary change between the Lennox School District and the Sioux Falls School District. Uh, resolution would transfer property from Lennox School District to the Sioux Falls School District. The Sioux Falls School District and the Lennox, um, School Districts were approached by a developer with their preference to make the change. Uh, the property is adjacent to Western Sioux Falls and is largely undeveloped. Uh, both school districts have held, uh, public meetings on the request and have had no petitions to refer their quest to a vote. And so the commission is asked to approve the, the resolution establishing the boundary change as of July 1st, 2021. And I don't believe there's anybody here from the school districts to talk on this item.
We got West Central right in the, or Lennox right in the middle of West Central and Sioux Falls isn't T E or somebody else right around there too?
Uh, yeah. You know, that's our, uh, school, that's our school boundary, um, system in South Dakota.
Yeah, amazing. Alrighty.
Mr. Chair?
To approve?
I, I just would say that these are basically gravel locations here. I think that's what's
Actually, that's real close to my house and there's a lot of development going on right there.
There is.
Yes.
But there's a lot of water and gravel.
To the north of there, yes. So, we have a motion, looking for a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Approved, same sign, it's approved.
Alright.
Alrighty. Alright, moving on to a road district.
Yes.
Even more diversity.
This request is to approve the formation of the Evergreen Acres Road District. Evergreen Acres addition is located approximately mile and a half north of the, uh, Cliff Avenue and I-90 intersection. Uh, the road district would include 57 individually-owned parcels. Representatives of the, uh, proposed road district have presented a petition to the auditor's office with the nu, uh, required number of landowner signatures. The auditor's office has, have met with the landowners and made them aware of the responsibilities of the road district. Um, road, the auditor's office has discussed with representatives of the road districts, responsibilities of a taxing district, which we're creating here. Uh, if the request is approved, the auditor's office will work with the property owners to schedule a, an election within 60 days of the commission approval. And if the landowners approve the formation of the road, uh, road district, an, an election would be held immediately following the, to elect the officers of the newly formed road district. Does require, um, request is for the approval of the resolution in order of the incorporation of the Evergreen Acres Road District. And there are representatives of the road district here today if, uh, you had questions for them, if they're, or if they'd like to speak.
Please, anybody here like to make comment, questions, or answer any questions? Please, just identify yourself.
I am Nancy Smith and I live in that road district or what hopes to be a road district. One of the comments I would make, which also came up when they were discussing that last planning is this kinda came on us as a surprise that we didn't have something set up because we've always had our roads. The snow has been removed by the township by the grace of their goodness. Um, and so when it came up that we did not have anything in place to fix these roads, it has been, um, uh, very frustrating and very hard to help everyone understand how that happened. So when you're approving future developments, I would encourage you to get, make them get a plan in so that something's there to take place. Cause there would have been a, another option also if this had been known and set up in the beginning of this development. Um, even as it sets, I think the, the roads are a lot. They don't even belong to the homeowners. They belong to the person who developed this development, but they don't have any responsibility for it. Um, and so it's been very enlightening on one hand, but frustrating and confusing on the other.
Good advice.
Jane first. I just would, um, commend you guys. I also live in a rural development. We dealt with sim, similar issues. It is no easy task to get this many signatures on folks, um, to get this put together. And so, um, I really appreciate you guys taking the leadership on this to come up with a solution for your development because roads are really important and astonishingly expensive. And so, um, I just wanna thank you guys. I'm fully in support of it.
Commissioner Riber.
By happenstance, about two months ago, drove through this whole development, looked at, it's a very nice area, nice homes in there. Um, I was amazed that you guys only have one entrance and not two, um, which, and is another thing we had on the last issue that we just talked about, that there's two entrances and so driving around there was kinda like, oh, we're at a dead end. Um, Nancy, this is just for the record, you need to give her your address so that it can be in the minutes. I apologize for that, but thank you for coming.
My address is 6625 North Angel Avenue, Sioux Falls.
I have a question also. Uh, Nancy, are you guys, and this is almost unrelated, are you on the Renner sanitary district for?
We are on the Renner sanitary, uh, sanitary district. We're in the Sioux Falls Water District. Um, we're actually in the Brandon School District. It's a little bit of a conf, we're a half a mile outside of the city limit, so we've got a little bit of everything in our
And your Minnehaha County.
Still in Minnehaha County. And I believe Scott has left, but you know, the whole road district thing, I gotta wonder if having a road dri, district when you have one owner versus all of a sudden you have to include everybody, how do, you know, what's the best, better approach to making that be addressed at the beginning instead of at the end? I, I don't know if there's a better approach to doing this, but yeah, it does, one neighbor says yes, the other neighbor says no. So the fact that you're able to get everybody on board on a petition, or as many as you did anyway, I'm sure does help, so. Alrighty.
Motion to approve? Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign, motion carries. Thank you. Alright. We are now looking for mental health, legal representation.
Yes.
Not for the commission board.
Yet. So the request, yeah, for, for, um, to authorize the chairperson to sign the agreement, uh, for counsel to represent respondents on mental health hold. So proposed agreement is, uh, to hire an attorney to represent any respondents who are on a Minnehaha County mental health hold. Today, respondents are represented by, um, Minnehaha County Public Defender and occasionally the Public Advocate's Office. The proposal is to contract with Renee Cruz for a fee of $2,666 a month or approximately $32,000 a year. Uh, Ms. Cruz would be responsible for meeting with the respondents prior to their hearing and represent the, a respondent at the hearing. Agreement is for one year with the ability by either party to cancel with, within 30 to eight's notice.
Alrighty, questions for Ben?
Is, is, oh, go ahead, yeah.
Just wanted to make it clear, Eric Bog again, State Attorney's Office. The one part of the, the arrangement that's not part of this contract because it would be proposed from the county to Ms. Cruz is in the event that Ms. Cruz has a conflict or is sick or on vacation and the hearing pops up while she's otherwise unable to act in this capacity, the Public Defender's Office will still be required to act in that role. So, because they're not a party to this contract, it just isn't reflected. I wanted to make that clear for all of you, so.
Looking for a motion, giving me authority to sign the agreement. So moved. Commissioner.
I just would note that this is an idea that we've looked at for several years now, trying to figure out a way, uh, to do, to outsource this info, this service, um, to free up some time for the Public Defender's Office to, uh, to do matters that they are more, um, trained up to do on a regular basis. And Ms. Cruz has experience already providing this service to Lincoln County. So I think this is a great, um, a great opportunity for us and I'm fully supportive of it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Batting a thousand. Alrighty, good morning, Chris.
Good morning, Commissioners, Chris Swanson, Minnehaha County Treasurer. So I am here today to, um, get permission to sign a consulting agreement from Dr. Tracy, the USC Professor of Beacon School of Business. Um, he came in, it was about a week and a half ago and, um, gave me his, his, um, paperwork on what he would do for our office. And then, um, said, you know, write a contract up, get that sent to him. I haven't heard it back from him yet and I hope it's soon because he said he's coming the last week in June. I'm hoping he's here soon. But, um, it would be about, he said he under charges, but over delivers. So I'm hoping that that's true. So, um, what he wants to do, um, when he comes in on the last week, he will be watching the lines, timing to see, you know, how long it takes to get through our lines. He's, he's got a lot of different irons in the fire. He's gonna, uh, interview our, our staff, see what they do for jobs, see if we can streamline any of those, see if we need more staff. I mean, it's, it's just gonna be a process and so I'm just kind of anxiously waiting to see where we're, where we're gonna land in all this. So that's kind of it really.
Comments?
We've had, um, Dr. Tracy came, um, here a few years ago and went through our whole building with the exception of the Treasurer's Office and looked for efficiencies and, and, and actually helped, um, push us forward in some of the remodeling stuff we're doing for the State's Attorney's Office. And so I think having Dr. Tracy back to look at the Treasurer's Office
And so, I think having Dr. Tracy back to look at the Treasurer's Office, since we hadn't done it a few years ago, is a good idea to figure out how we can streamline in that office and how we can make the flow more efficient, so. And I think that's probably what he's going to deliver for us.
You know, I'm, thank you for doing this, Chris. I've been, observed and commented that a lot of time, government officials are slow to change and to embrace different ways of doing things because we've done it this way forever, so I'm glad to see you moving forward with this and I'm supportive of it also, so.
I'm very excited for this change. I just think this is really going to be a plus for the Treasurer's Office. I, I, he's, he's kind of already thrown out a few ideas and I'm just so excited for something new, some, some change. I, I just, I think we could really get this to run well. You know, right now, we're kind of at a struggle just because, you know, well, we've had, you know, we've lost a couple of our window techs because of the fact that one retired, one did quit. And then, so we're kind of too short right now. We have hired two, so I'm excited to get them started, but then we just had a gentleman come in today. His dad passed away and so, he's gone for the rest of the week. So, you're pulling from here and there to try to make ends meet and it's like, there's got to be a better way for this and we're going to find it, so. So, I am so on board with this.
I'd make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Approved.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Jamie, are you, oh, right here, I was going to say, are you on the phone? Welcome, sir.
Good morning, Jamie Gravitt, Juvenile Detention Center. I'm before you today requesting that you approve the new contract with Lutheran Social Services to provide shelter care services and our reception center services. Minnehaha kind of set the standard in alternatives prior to even being a part of JDAI by providing shelter care services and realizing that we need to hold the best, the, the kids in the best place at the right time. Shelter care provides services for lower level offenders and kids that just need some help, that can't really get it at home yet. We find it very valuable. If we didn't have shelter care services, we'd be running at capacity or above every day at JDC. So, I'd ask that you approve this MOU and contract.
Make a motion to assign the memorandum of understanding with Lutheran Social Services to provide shelter care and reception services at the JDC.
Second.
Alrighty, I see that the contract has a increase in the salaries and I know from talking to people just this morning, how much, how difficult it's been able to keep up with a lot of that.
It has been. I also, Amy Witt from LSS is here as well, if you have any questions specific to the shelter care or reception center as well.
Comments, questions? Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approve, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Jamie.
Thank you, guys.
And, last item, agenda item, with Alicia. Good morning, Alicia.
Good morning, Commission. Thank you for hearing this item. Alicia Colores, City of Sioux Falls Health Department. As I briefed you at the last meeting, Falls Committee Health has access to about 1.1 million dollars in American Recovery Act funds for capital improvements. The reason I'm here a second time is because the funding request is in two different buckets. The first bucket was $500,000. This next bucket of funding that we are justifying is approximately $622,000. And as I mentioned at my previous presentation, we fully intend to work closely with Director Benz and Director Krins on identifying areas of the building that we could potentially renovate and remodel for expansion of space of Falls Committee Health, as well as improvements to our existing footprint. We in fact had our first meeting on June 1st, 4th, to kind of go through the floor plans and just talk about the pros and cons of the different areas of the building. So, just as I was here before, this second request requires a landlord letter of consent. State's Attorney Bog has reviewed the letter and provided edits on your behalf and we agree with those edits and would ask for your approval on the letter so that we can submit it with our application for the funding.
Questions for Alicia?
I'm, I appreciate this, I'm going to support it, but my question is, how is the city so able to spend these federal funds that we're not able to seem to find a way to spend?
So, these funds, so Falls Committee Health is a federally qualified health center. We have a separate designation with the federal government, as well as separate funding just for our Falls Committee Health operations. And so, these funding opportunities came directly to Falls Committee Health to create capital improvements, yes, but there was a whole other bevy of things such as increasing access for pent up healthcare demand, meeting the demands of COVID over the, over the next two to three years. So, this is money that has special requirements and special purposes and it was released directly through our federal grant.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion? No.
Okay.
Make motion?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thanks for sitting through the meeting.
Thank you.
And smiling.
Yeah. We are at liaison reports. Commissioner Iber.
I have a bunch, so bear with me, please. Last night, there was a retirement picnic for Lions Fire Fighters, Bruce Mork, Donnelly Fredrickson, and Harold Boar. So, you probably recognize most of those names. I should have written down, written down how many years they've been there, but a significant amount of time and they were all retiring. It was a nice group of about 35, maybe 40 people that came, of firefighters, to honor those guys. I had a call this last week with a state committee, which is improving criminal justice response for persons with mental illness. I've been on that oversight group for probably about five or six years and just watching all the work that's been done, directed by that group statewide. And one of the, one of the many topics we talked about that I wanted to tell you about was the virtual care, which, when we started with this group, telehealth was kind of the new concept in South Dakota. Air Health was doing it and it came up in that group. And there were, there were several pilot counties, rural counties, that were put on this virtual cares, mental health response team, kind of like we have our, we have our mobile crisis team. They don't have that in small communities. So, they started out with a few communities and it was so successful that they expanded to 11 different counties. And now, they have 11 more that want to get on board and they've seen huge successes with just this telehealth mental response with their sheriffs. The number one call was for suicides and the number two call was for depressions. And they diverted 75% of these people from these calls. 5% were admitted voluntarily and 20% were involuntary committed. It's just been such a huge help for these rural communities that didn't have anywhere to go. I also talked through a lot of the state bills that have been brought forward on mental illness. There's just been such a, one, it seems like an explosion of mental illness issues in, in the state or even across the United States, but our state has really done a really good job of trying to move forward with some of the work to address some of the issues we have. And CIT training too, there's a state coordinator now that we put into place a few years ago that we didn't have and just all the training and training modules and not, not, our law enforcement no longer has to always go to peer for, I think it's a 40 hour week for training now, they can do it online. And so, we've just really done a lot of great, great things with this committee. I also had a state JDAI call this week, which I sit on that board also. We've added a, the state has added another community, which is Yankton, to JDAI practices and the Council of Juvenile Services has given them a grant to hire a coordinator for their community. We've had another community, Bennett County has now also asked to apply to be another juvenile detention alternatives site where they would get some state funding or some grant money hopefully, to help them get up and running, to try to divert kids out of detention and hold them responsible for their deeds without putting them in juvenile detention. I have another one, I have to figure out where it is at. Oh, we had a juvenile policy partnership meeting last week and just continued to talk about some of the truancy issues and, and we're going to be diving deeper into now, looking at some of the data that reflects, was reflected with that. Some, what are some of the early school interventions that we can do? We're going to look at our case processing and just kind of review back some of the things we've done and where can we tighten up things that maybe have gotten lax or how can we make improvements upon some of the, some of the issues that we have taken care of in the past. I think that's it.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Bender.
So, I just have a couple liaison reports. First of all, just a reminder that Steve Groen starts next Monday as our Highway Superintendent. I want to really give a shout out to the Highway Department and particularly to Shannon and Hank. They've done a great job in the interim, keeping things moving forward out there and really handling all the, the challenges and the different issues and it's been great to work with them over the last couple of months and we all look forward to having Steve on board. There'll be plenty for him to do. So, the other, a couple of other things I wanted to note is that I'm also the liaison to IT and to the State's Attorney's Office and we did have a meeting last week to talk about how to move forward a process to review the different software options. And as you know, through the budgeting process, it came up, we've got a placeholder to purchase, potentially purchase some new software that the State's Attorney's offering, or asking for. And so, we met and we, the civil State's Attorney is working with Barry Dunn, who's identified by IT as somebody who could lead that process. We worked with Barry Dunn previously on ERP projects and so, we're, we're going to probably be bringing forth to the commission authorization to retain Barry Dunn to run a project where we can compare the different software options and come up with a solution and a recommendation moving forward. So, hopefully, we can try to get that done here in the next quarter at least. So, I really appreciate the effort on the State's Attorney's Office in moving that process forward and, as well as IT.
It's a big budget item, I'm glad to hear.
Yeah. So, I, I think we've got a process now in place, a plan anyway, and we'll be, after we get approval to retain Barry Dunn, we'll be putting together kind of a, a committee of folks, stakeholders across the county, to come together and, and do some scoring of the different options and, and make sure that we identify for all the parties kind of the, the pros and cons of the different options available. And then, just finally, we had a meeting of the Affordable Housing Board last week that they've lost some leadership, but Matt Tobias is now leading that group. It's kind of a, Minnehaha County, Sioux, City of Sioux Falls and there's Lincoln County represented, representation on there as well. And we were able to make some recommendations about funding different housing projects and continue to, you know, really be looking at affordable housing and how we can best impact that for the community. So, it's a great group to work with and, and I appreciate the leadership that Matt's providing now.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I really enjoy your liaison reports, ladies. So, East Dakota Water Development District had a meeting and we talked about the state funding for water here in eastern South Dakota. And it's, things are moving around. The state wants to give us the money so we can give it to them. But, in any case, that's still in process. And along those lines, the Renner Sanitary District was heavily damaged by the flooding we had a couple of years ago. Their pumping stations were immersed and the floodwaters filled with sand and they're in a, a very expensive rebuilding process right now. And they basically pump their stuff to Sioux Falls that, and processes it. So, as the city is moving, creeping north, virtually everything from Highway 90 north to Renner is, is in the Renner Sanitary District. So, the subdivision that we had here, I was pretty confident was included in that. And along those lines, Jay Gilbertson, who's our East Dakota Water Development Director, is coming in next Monday night to the Planning and Zoning Commission early. We're going to have a light snack for the members of the commission and Jay is going to further educate the planning commissioners on the aquifers and different water things in Minnehaha County.
That's great to hear, Commissioner. I would almost ask that he come to us and do the same because.
He would love to. I think we had him in once, but we were, like, we had 88 things on the agenda and we gave him six minutes or something.
Yeah. No, I, one of the things that we, I get asked a lot about, especially with the federal funds coming, is, you know, help us out with this, radios, wastewater, whatever, but to me, it's all about the water. And I'm, I'm concerned with the growth that this area is experiencing that, you know, have we really taken a long-term view of how much water will we need in this area and, you know, can, should we be thinking about helping or pooling resources to bring more water here?
Well, and, you know, I remember before Lewis and Clark, when people were scrambling, trying to figure out ways of getting us more water. And I think there's actually been suggestion of expanding Lewis and Clark or adding a second pipeline.
I think it'd be a third pipeline and that would increase capacity by 50% and I think that's a great idea.
You know, Brookings County actually has a much deeper aquifer or underground lake of water than we do. As you drive up there and you look at the gravel pits along the interstate, they're full, that's the water table. And one idea that I had was to pump that water into the Big Sioux River and let it come down here. Without a pipeline.
There you go, a natural pipeline. Anything else?
No.
Okay. My own report, last week, the Sioux Metro Growth Alliance met, we had a board meeting. I didn't bring my notes on it. Of course, it's a lot about econ, all about economic development in the communities around Lincoln and Minnehaha County. Nothing significant jumped out, routine business, which is very important stuff. That was Wednesday, Thursday, I went with Auditor Kite and our Registered Deeds Julie Risti down to Beersford for the Southeast District Meeting of County Officials. A lot of interesting discussion around JDAI, around water, and some of the other issues that we as counties face together. Tomorrow, I'll have a board meeting of the Link. And then, Thursday, I have a meeting in peer for the South Dakota Association of County Officials. So, more to come on that. Anybody wonders what a county commissioner does?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Follow up to my earlier report, I know that when Carol Muller listed some of the things that the federal largesse could be used for, water was one of them.
Exactly, exactly. So, today, we've covered construction contracts, fire emergency declarations, fireworks show, emergency radio funding, chiller plans, radio, school district boundaries, road districts, mental health, legal consulting agreements, shelter care, and we'll be moving into personnel next. Any, if you're like me, commissioners, people ask you, what's, what, what, what's new with the county? And I just get a blank stare in my face, I don't even know where to begin.
Exactly.
Because every one of these things took hours and just being able to talk about them.
And a lot of them think we hire teachers or run the Sioux Falls Police Department. I mean, this is, there's so much misinformation and misapprehension out there that people need to come and see us. A room of smiling faces.
Exactly. Love it. Any new business? Any old business? Alright, I'm going to put us at recess for about, let's go six minutes, Tony, is that enough to shut it down?
Should be.
10 minutes, okay.
He said should be, six minutes.
Oh, six minutes is enough, okay. We'll be back here at 10:35. Thank you. Oh, wait, I need to, I need a motion to go to recess.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We are at recess.